I'd call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buckner, Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
Please stand for invocation and pledge allegiance to the flag. You bow your heads as I pray. God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have with us the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Bill Screenya, who is going to inform us not only about an exciting project, but about some marvelous awards the Parks and Recreation won.
Mayor, thank you. Thanks for taking all the I was gonna surprise you with. Thanks for allowing us to have an opportunity to come in front of you and give you a quick update on some projects and some accomplishments of Parks and Recreation. First, I'd like to share with you our strategic plan. You should have a copy of this at your desk. This is our three-year strategic plan, and we're just now starting year one of this. Our staff are just now meeting and working on the process of tackling year one. This plan was made up of all the information that was gathered during our master planning process. So this was made up from all the surveys we did with citizens, the public input meetings. This is what came back to us. So then we took this. This is our action for the next three years that we're focusing on. Wanted to share that with you. Next, I'd like to say congratulations to the community and to many of our staff. While winning awards isn't new to Danville, we certainly are honored when we do win awards. And this year, we've been recognized by the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society for three awards. And we compete in the under fifty thousand population category. And this year, we were fortunate enough to win Best New Program in the State for a program that was called Rover Walk, which people got exercise points by walking dogs from the Humane Society Shelter. We also were awarded first place for the Best New Renovation for some work that we did at the Blue Recreation Center. All the downstairs work to modernize that facility. And finally, we were recognized for Best New Facility, and this was in the Parks, Trails, Playgrounds, and Greenway category. And that was for the Danville Art Trail, which, by the way, is starting to, this is the end of this month, we'll have new pieces of art coming into that. So that was, it was nice. It's always nice to be recognized by your peers. And we look forward to competing in many more categories next year. And finally, I'd like to introduce Jason Bookheimer.
Bill, pass those awards around. Let us get a close-up look at them.
Finally, I'd like to introduce Jason Bookheimer. Jason's our Division Director of Community Recreation. And he's gonna give you an update on a very unique and creative project we're very excited about. And we certainly think this is gonna be another award-winning project for us. This project takes the creativity of a children's book and addresses the attitudes and the future of our river. It's called The Dan River Twins. And we're gonna, Jason was the project leader on this, so I'm gonna let him tell you about the project. It's interesting. When we first started out, we didn't think that developing a children's book would be that much work. We thought we could do it in maybe three to six months. Well, two years later, we have the book finished. And like I said, Jason's done an outstanding job of coordinating all the moving pieces of getting a book written and edited and illustrated and into the school system. But we're gonna let Jason tell you about that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like Bill said, he's handing around the Dan River Twins Children's Book. And while, yes, it does look like a children's book, it's much more, it means a lot more to us in our department and especially our community than just being a children's book. As you all know, the Dan River in the past few years, as well as many years before that, has faced some challenges when it comes to water quality and perception of the river. So about three years ago, we had the concept of how do we change the community's thought process? And how do we really make something's gonna be a catalyst for change and not just be a project or a program or something that happens once a year or a festival? So we decided that a children's book and targeting children and getting them to start thinking and changing their mindsets about the Dan River was probably the most appropriate way. So we conceived the idea of the Dan River Twins. And now about three years later, with much support, we had support from the Danville Regional Foundation, Danville Science Center, Danville Public Schools, Pennsylvania County Schools, also History United, Dan River Basin Association, and the Danville Public Library. So it took a lot of community partners to pull together to get this project where it is. And now our real work actually begins. So the three years it took us to get to this point, currently, every single fourth-grade student in the city of Danville has a copy of this book in their classrooms. We worked tirelessly with a lot of educators in the city and the county to develop SOL curriculum so it can coincide with their entire school year lesson plans. And one of the coolest pieces about this whole project is that the students actually can live this book out. We have SOL field trips where they can come out with our department. We're also working with the Science Center in there. We're gonna jointly offer SOL field trips. We have programs that are gonna be accomplished and kinda show people what it is out on the river. As you flip through, you'll see probably images that you notice, like the white mill. Our department plans to put things along the trail as well to signify important points in the river. The actual home of the Dan River Twins is in the Sandy River where it connects into the Dan River. So as now, we're currently installing the bridges and the boardwalk up there. We'll soon have a home of the Dan Rivers Twins site to where we'll have information. And hopefully, the end goal of this is that we start building a community that cares about the river. We start creating stewardship in our young students and also adults. And hopefully, we can get some of the students to change their parents' mindset as well and start getting a community that really cares and focuses on the river because it is an asset in our community. And we hope that you find some enjoyment out of it and we get to share it. And we also, we do have it available for the community as well at the Welcome Center. So as well as schools and events that we'll have, we hope that this really does turn out to be a catalyst for change for our community. So if anybody has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just wanna congratulate you guys and thank you guys for the hard work you've put in. And obviously, to be recognized and rewarded for the great job you're doing. And the book is fantastic. Most of you guys know I've got a young son at home. He's not quite old enough to read this yet, but he usually, he gets a little bit sad when I have to come to these council meetings and leave him, but I get to come home tonight with a present for him. So thank you guys for that. And I think this is something great for young people and something that we can look back on a long time from now. Really cool thing. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Miller.
Departments in the state. The Blue Park, I appreciate it because I do Tai Chi there every Monday. The renovations there and just all the trail and everything you all do. And this book is just outstanding. This is a can't miss for an award. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
I just wanted to detail what has already been said, but that's what makes Danville so special. What you're doing now just takes us to a higher level, and I thoroughly appreciate it. And piggybacking on what Councilman Vogler said, I have a grandson. I plan to most definitely give him this tonight. Thank you so much.
Councilman Saunders.
Another example of the great talent of many of our young people. Thank you so much. And they represent well.
Councilman Jones.
Great job.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Great job. How do citizens get a copy of the book?
It's available at the Welcome Center. Also, we have a website, danrivertwins.com. You can actually download on your iBooks, Kindle, and stuff like that as well. It's free.
At the Welcome Center, what does it cost?
It's fourteen ninety-five.
Fourteen ninety-five. Great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Let me just add. Councilman Whittle.
No, it's a great job and I'll just keep coming up with great ideas that are working real well. I didn't know if that was Ken Gillie on that bicycle on the front there.
Let me just add, this is a, I think is a fantastic idea. What a great educational tool for our children, but what a great PR piece for our city of Danville. And I don't know whose idea was, but it was marvelous idea, marvelous book. I can't wait to read the ending. Thank you.
Thank you.
Coffee. At this time, we'll have communications from visitors. Citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Richardson. I live at seven thirty-one Grove Street, and I'm with the Old West End. And last week, we had been having discussions about the crime in Danville. And we had been brainstorming about ways and things how to reach our young people. So it dawned on me that the River City TV cable program, the station that you have on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays are idle. It keeps running the same old programming. So I came here tonight to suggest that the city of Danville look at engaging the youth through pilot programs such as teen news, because we know that all the cable programs on Saturday mornings do children's program. Why cannot Danville do it for the ages of five to thirty-five, for the young folks in Danville, do pilot programming, and let the community of young people and the school system, you've already got your body of people, you already have your base. Why not let the young people from five to thirty-five take Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, get their phones, Facebook, and put it on cable TV, and let them create their programming and the message that they would like to send about what's great about Danville? And I thought about this because I'd been watching the programming on Saturday, and it just seemed like a no-brainer. Now, I do have the outline for it, but I know there are a lot of brilliant people in this room. And I believe that through brainstorming, the city of Danville could find a way to get sponsors, sell advertising, fundraising, to set it up as a nonprofit, whatever you had to do to make it accessible for the young people of Danville from five to fifty, whatever you're young at heart, whatever you call yourself, and do seniors programming on Sunday and start it as a pilot program for maybe six months to one year, and get the message out in Danville that the young people should get involved in government, public affairs, and give them something to do because we keep talking about crime. And most of the victims of crime are young folks. But there's a way to use the TV programming and to use the tools that you already have in place, the instruments that you already have in place to get your message out. And I know that people tell me all the time, do they watch River City TV? I hear it all the time, that they see you all on TV. But they will not come before City Council because there is a fear. And so what I want to do is to increase the young people's confidence in speaking publicly. And I think that's critical in Danville. We always talk about giving them job, workplace skills. If a person can't interview successfully and if they cannot speak publicly, there are gonna be deficits. Not only with maybe hard skills or education skills, there are going to be deficits with communication skills. And I think we have for a long time. It just seemed like a no-brainer to me. We're not using River City TV to the degree that I would like to see it. It runs the same old, that's fine. It runs the same old news bulletins. But I would like to see, in addition to that, I would like to see a, some young person, maybe a journalism course, somebody from the community colleges, get involved with the Danville City Council or whoever runs River City TV and open up a pilot journalism school where they can have the young people sit at the desk and give the news that teens would like to do. And I could go on and on about it, but that's just what I wanted to say because if we don't engage them and if we don't give them a voice and a way to speak in this community, they're going to walk away. And we need to give them an opportunity to envision what Danville can be for them, and that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please state your name.
Crystal Cobbs. I'd first like to thank you all for allowing me the chance to speak. As I say, my name is Crystal Cobbs, and I'm here on behalf of a newly formed group in Danville called Parents of the Schools. And I'd also like to thank Vice Mayor Jones for inviting us to come and speak, introduce ourselves, and for coming to our last meeting that we had. Our mission is simply to increase parental involvement within the school system. Although the mission is simple, we've discovered in these two short months since we've come together that it is challenging, but it is necessary. What does parental involvement look like? It happens in a number of ways, from reading a book to your child, to volunteering at the school, attending PTA meetings, attending school board meetings, checking daily folders, and being an advocate. All of these things seem simple to do, but everyone is busy, and some people just may not see the value in participating in these activities. I know for myself that before I had children engaged in the public school system, I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old in the school system. So until it started directly affecting me, I've just recently become engaged and more aware of what's going on. So it's easy for us to get on social media and other public forums and complain about things that we see that we may not like, but it's another thing to roll up your sleeves and go to work and say, what can we do to help change it? So some of my friends are here. There's other people who have been working with us too, but like I said, people are busy, so everybody couldn't come. But that's our message, is simply to increase parental involvement and to let you know we are here to help, that we know that you are. One area is education that you all are looking at. So we have the same mission that we wanna better the education in Danville Public Schools, and we wanna do whatever we can to help.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not our items, not on the agenda? Please state your name.
Mayor or Vice Mayor.
And excuse me, ma'am, if you would pull that mic down just a little bit lower so we could hear you. Thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Gloria Johnson. I live on the south side of this area. And I'm fairly new to this area, about a little over five years. And I travel mostly towards Blue Park, and there's no sidewalks on that side of the city. And I see parents and children walking in the middle of the streets. And also, have you considered connecting the transportation to Pennsylvania County so that people can travel backwards and forth for conveniences? And lastly, there's no community activities such as basketball courts and facility for picnics. Only one I noticed is the one there on, with the street, on where the ducks are, the geese. And that's kinda, I went walking there one day and all I see was poop. And I couldn't even walk the trails there. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move into the regular minutes of meeting. First is the minutes of the December twentieth meeting. What is your pleasure, Council? Reverend Campbell.
Yes.
Councilman Campbell.
I make motion for receiving minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the December twentieth second by Councilman Saunders. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Next item is the consent agenda item. And since they're both dealing with finances, there is a public hearing, and there'll be a public hearing for both item B and C. B being recycling efforts and C being the taxiway at the airport. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on either item, B or C, under the consent agenda? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. What is the pleasure, Council Madison? Excuse me, Councilman Whittle.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items, B and C.
Motion to approve a consent agenda item, B and C. Is there a second? Councilman Saunders, any discussion? I should've said this earlier, but if any of the councilmen wish to withdraw one of these, we can still do so, I guess. Can we not, Clark?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none. Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Under new business, consideration of approval. Approving a resolution to authorize Phase Two of the Pine Street Storm Drainage Project. I open the public hearing.
Good evening. Paul Leapy from the Old West End. I'm here to urge you to approve this item. The area around Five Forks will be, I believe, the next big growth area following the River District. And the proper infrastructure is necessary to make that area grow. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the Pine Street Storm Drainage Project? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit amendments to the two thousand fifteen through two thousand nineteen Consolidated Action Plan to allow funding for the installation of storm sewers on the south side of Pine Street.
Second, Vice Mayor Jones. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call and roll.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner. Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Consideration of approving a resolution to authorize a moral obligation for real estate on Bridge Street. What is your pleasure? Councilman, Vice Mayor Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a moral obligation agreement by and between the city of Danville, Virginia and American National Banking Trust Company.
Your second to the motion. Your second, seconded by Councilman Miller, Dr. Miller. Any discussion on the motion? Please call and roll.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner. Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye. In item C, consideration of adopting an ordinance to provide for the acquisition and construction of an alternate entrance to the Pinetag Neighborhood. What is your pleasure, Councilman Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty seventeen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a transfer from the general fund balance and appropriating same for acquisition and construction of an alternate entrance to the Pinetag Neighborhood in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for first reading.
Seconded by Councilman Dr. Miller, Councilman Miller, Councilman Dr. Miller. That's too much to say. Can I just say Gary?
Councilman's fine.
Discussion on the motion. Please call and roll. I'm sorry, first reading. Thank you. Communications from city manager. Deputy city manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City attorney. City clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Roll call. See, I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Well, first of all.
You did that intentionally just to make me feel good, didn't you?
I did. First of all, our best wishes and for a successful surgery, and our prayers go with our fellow Councilman James Buckner. I don't know if he's watching tonight or not, but our prayers go with you. Secondly, today, several of us, Mr. Vogler and the Vice Mayor and myself and the Mayor, went to the Avery University and Danville Regional Medical Center Health and Wellness Center opening. And this was sponsored by the hospital. It's for the students. And I was sort of amazed that the university size of Avery didn't have a center for their students. But they do now. And I was really proud because the physician who's gonna be the director, Dr. Jenny Holmes Emery, has been one of my students. And she did cardiology with me. And it made me look back a few years when we were trying to convince DRMC and LifePoint, because everything goes through National, how valuable this would be to our community. And we told them that this would bear fruit. bear fruit in time. We would start training our own physicians. We had a tremendous physician shortage at that time, primary care physicians. And it's hard to recruit people to come to the south side. But if we train our own, a lot of them stay. And a lot of them have stayed. We have several working in the hospitals, one working in Yanceville. We've had it working out in the clinic on forty-one and the clinics in Gretna. So, we're populating these clinics with our homegrown physicians. And it, it just made me feel good that this is starting to bear fruit. And she's an excellent physician. They, they got a jewel with her. And then finally, this is a very eventful weekend. There was almost too many events to go to. I didn't make them all, but I made as many as I could. There was a dinner Saturday night, SCLC from Martin Luther King. There was a seminar dinner yesterday, or Sunday afternoon, where people of different races and different persuasions got together and just talked about race relations and what Martin Luther King meant to them and what we could do to improve our city, how we could help combat racism and how we could go forward. We got to go forward as one group. We can't go separately. We're all in this boat together. And that was a great event. The breakfast yesterday morning, Bishop Campbell spoke. And then the peace march on Sunday. I've been doing this for ten years, but it's been going on a lot longer than that. Many of you have been walking a lot longer than that. And there was a youth, and I remember what he said, he was getting discouraged, a black youth, because he said, what good is this doing? We've had record murders this year. Sixteen people killed. The violence continues. Why are we doing this? It's futile. You know, I had to acknowledge what he said, you know, it's true. But what would Martin Luther King have said? Would he said, go home, quit marching, quit singing? It's futile? I don't think so. He would have said, keep marching, keep walking, keep singing. And eventually the walls of Jericho will come tumbling down. The violence will end. So, that's why the people in Danville need to keep marching and keep praying against violence. Thank you.
Yes, I too would like to thank everyone who sponsored the program this weekend and in remembrance of Dr. Martin Luther King. The dream is still something to be obtained. We're still working on that. Mr. Dr. Miller, I agree. We must keep marching. We can't stop. It is for us. More importantly, it's for our future. And special thanks to all of those who had the events Friday, Saturday, Sunday and again on yesterday as well. And finally, I want to say to Mr. James Buckner, get well soon. Miss you over here, buddy. Thank you.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, I, I first want to give a shout out to Josh and Brandon who are watching this meeting. And I told them that if they watched, I would say their name on television. So, there you go, guys. Of course, our good, our good friend, Councilman James Buckner, as has been mentioned, is, is having open heart surgery tomorrow morning. It's seven AM is when his surgery is going to be. For those of you who feel so inclined to, to say a prayer for him, his surgery is at seven o'clock in the morning. And he actually texted me right before the meeting and, and I want to read what he said, but it said, he said, "I feel good about it. It's all in God's hands and he will have me back good as new in no time." And I know we all look forward to that. James and I have been friends for way longer than either one of us ever thought about running for city council. And our friendship has only, of course, gotten stronger in the time that we've been on council. But he's not only a great councilman, he's a great man. And those who have gotten to know him over the years know that that is the case. And I actually know he is watching right now, Dr. Miller, because I saw on our River City TV livestream that it showed he was watching. His name was on there. So, he's sitting in the hospital room right now on his iPad, watching these city council meetings. That's, that's how much he loves this city. And just want you to know, James, we love you and we're thinking of you, buddy. And look forward to having you back soon. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Whittle.
Yeah, especially the Councilman Buckner and his family. It's just a tough time. Get into it and you work through it best, best on. We had a national prayer breakfast in Richmond. Councilman Vogler was there also. It was great to see people from Danville and Pennsylvania County show up for, for that event. And yesterday, Avery had the event. I was packing food in the afternoon in volunteer lines, so I, I didn't get to the dinner that was later on that day. I, I missed it. It was a lot of things going on for the weekend and glad, glad to see it. With the Health and Wellness Center downtown, Dr. Miller hit on it, said it's a nice project with Avery. And glad, glad to see it. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner. Reverend Campbell.
Yes, first of all, tonight has been a good example of the community engaging with council on issues in our community. The young lady spoke on parental involvement. I agree with that one hundred percent. And I hope that that will be carried forward. It's always exciting to me to see citizens in the community come to council and express themselves for, that's what we look forward to in every kind of way. Last weekend was, since Friday, Martin Luther King celebrations have been great. A lot of activities going on. And it's always good to see how most of the activities was a full house, Mr. Mayor. It was very, very exciting. And also to my friend and brother, James Buckner, we are praying for you, my man. I know that God is able to carry you through trying times like this. And we love you. And we know that God has his hands upon you. And we're looking forward to sending you back in your chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Just want to say, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I missed a few minutes ago, if Crystal could stand and the parents who are with her stand, our second goal as city council is education. They also have a teacher with her who, Cheryl Stan. They were all at, just to tell you all a little bit about them, they were at O'Kelly's. City council's second goal is education. And these young ladies, along with some more parents, were at O'Kelly's with the superintendent, Dr. Andrews. And there were some young people in the room as well. And I just want to say thank you all so much for what you're doing. It's all positive. My question is, I wanted to ask it earlier, how can more parents get in touch with you to get involved?
Thank you, sir.
Can she come to the mic?
Please come to the mic.
Can she bring the parents with her so they can see?
Please bring all your guests with you. We want to see all of them.
Our next meeting is February second at five thirty and we'll be meeting at O'Kelly's again. And we also have an email address set up. It's potsdanville, that stands for Parents of the Schools. So, P-O-T-S-D-A-N-V-I-L-L-E at gmail dot com.
It is so important what you all are doing. I hear all the time from teachers and Cheryl can attest to this, I'm sure. A lot of times, the only time you see parents in school is when a kid goes home, tell the parents the teacher did this. And then all of a sudden, they come rushing into the school system all upset. Am I correct, Cheryl? But it's good to see positive parenting. Cheryl's side pleased to be doing some good thing. As Councilman Campbell said, thank you all so much. Please, I hope to see this grow. Hope you all come back again and feel the whole place with parents involved. That's the second goal of the council is the education. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Richardson spoke about River City TV. In our last meeting, we talked about more that Mark Aaron could do with our River City TV. And I'm so glad you came tonight. As Councilman Campbell stated, people involved in our community. Ms. Johnson, also thank you for coming. We talked about Councilman Buckner. When I got the news, I contacted Councilman Buckner and he and I spoke for a few minutes and all the love that he was receiving. My concern was him as well as Jessica. So, Jessica, if you're watching with Councilman Buckner, tell him cut the computer off. He has surgery in the morning. And we are praying for Buck. We are praying for you. Again, thank you all so much for a beautiful. Stay off the fried chicken. And stay off the fried chicken. Thank you all so much for a beautiful weekend. As was stated, the Martin Luther King weekend was absolutely phenomenal. And to Bishop Campbell and how he inspired our community. Yet if you were not there at the Stratford Center, he really blessed our community. I hope there's some CDs and DVDs and all that stuff out there because it's a blessing to see the wonderful things happen in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Gilstrap.
I too want to tell James, if you're watching, I don't even know which camera I'm on, but, but, but I'm talking to you, James, that we are thinking about you. We're praying for you and we love you and we miss you. And we're looking forward to having you back with us very soon. My congratulations to Parks and Recreation Department, not only winning three awards, but I think is outstanding idea of the new book, The Dan River Twins. That's, I think that's going to be great. I too would like to thank all those who organized the activities for Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. And it was a great day. It was a great weekend and, and it was nice to see people communicating and, and celebrating together. And my last, Ken, don't you have one more slide to show us? Please put the, oh.